Then that way I can go home and eat. So, and with that, I want to thank everybody for attending and we'll find out what's going to happen. I'll turn this over to Will.
Would you like me to call the role first?
Yeah, why be, do you want to get that formal? Go for it.
Yeah, I have to get that formal. Okay, Councilmember Cervantes.
Here.
Councilmember Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Molina.
I will excuse her absence.
Mayor Proton Hewitt.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
And I'm here, and then we have Planning with Lucia, we have Finance with Ms. Reed. I have Mike Thornton not here, and then I have Public Works by somebody, I have a hard time saying her name. And then Chief O'Connell. Sheriff Captain Clubfoot. Yeah, I know, I know. Ms. Reed, do you want to lead us in the flag salute? And I neglected to say that our city manager, Kobo, is here. And Mari, I will, one of these days before you go having your young, and I'm going to learn your name.
We've got about a week, we've got about a week left.
Yeah.
Okay, Will.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Today, we are very happy to present this public safety workshop for the council and for the public. As you know, and as through, as it is for pretty much every city throughout this nation, public safety is one of the most important functions that we have. It's usually ranked at the top or near the top for every single person in terms of the services that a city provides. And so, as a result, usually it does take up a significant portion of our budget. And one of the things that, originally what kind of prompted this meeting, what kind of culminated this meeting today was Councilmember Manley had suggested that we form an ad hoc committee for, to explore our sheriff's services and service levels and things like that. And so, we've had several meetings to discuss that with Councilmember Manley and Mayor Proton Hewitt, who is a member of that committee, and that kind of culminated in what we're going to present today. And along with that, residents have expressed concern over the coverage we received from the Sheriff's Department in particular. And so, we wanted to address some of those things directly. And so, today in our presentation, our goal is to provide an overview of the services we receive from the Sheriff's Department, review relevant police services data. So, we've got a bunch of charts and graphs that's going to show all that, including calls for service and breaking those down in different ways. Part one, crime trends and officer to population ratio with comparison to other Riverside County contract cities. Then on top of that, we're going to make this a full public safety presentation. We're also going to look at an annual report from the Fire Department, including some of our resource areas and some of our challenges in our fire services. And then, we want to take a holistic view of public safety services within our city so that we can kind of integrate areas where we can integrate, utilizing, leveraging both our sheriff's resources and our fire resources to maximize community benefit. So, we're going to have a SWAT analysis of both our police and fire services, looking at some objectives and a concept, and the concept of community risk reduction. So, with that, I want to introduce both our Fire Chief, Tim O'Connell, and our Sheriff's Captain, Evan Peterson. And Chief O'Connell, will you introduce the staff that you have with us today?
Thanks, Will, Mayor, members of the council. I've asked the Fire executive staff to come in with me today to sit through the strategic planning process as Will's talked about. And as I introduce them, you're going to look at 175 years of firefighting experience, and that's on the low end. So, we have a very, very seasoned staff, a well-rounded crew. I'd first like to introduce Battalion One, Alan Raposa. He's the Battalion Commander of our A Shift, followed by our newly appointed Battalion Chief, Jesse Quinalti. Battalion Two, and then Battalion Three, Steve Shaw. And then behind Chief Shaw is a familiar face, Deputy Fire Marshal, Battalion Chief, Jerry Rodriguez. And we're going to talk a lot about his program as we go on through the presentation this afternoon. But well-rounded crew, we rely on them. You can sleep well at night because I sleep better working with all these men. They're doing a great job in leading your Fire Department to provide public safety services.
And next, I'm going to have Captain Peterson introduce who he has, and then he'll go right into his presentation.
Thank you. And with me today, as the Cavazon Station is ran with Sheriff's Captain and Sheriff's Lieutenant, I brought Lieutenant Chris Olson, same kind of time on as me. He's actually retiring before me. So, the near 30 years, we're in the 28s, started very similar timeframe and those kind of things. That's in June, and so, I've been in talks with the sheriff and everything else regarding what the next right fit is for us, some of those dynamics that we all have talked about for, I like the Pass area. I'm a resident of the Pass area, and some of those things that Chris and I have talked about for making it easier for him versus living far out of the area, and some of that stuff that seems the right mix for us at Calamasa and the station. And so, all of that's underway, I would expect, quite frankly, in the next few weeks, kind of notified as Chris is leaving in mid-June as to who I'm getting and starting some of those introduction and pieces from there, as we have talked about extensively some of those parameters, and so, that part of things has been good. And then also bringing Pop Officer Hinkle for the city. I will get into some of his, not just his role, but as I get questioned a lot and we put it in here on purpose, so not just you guys could hear and understand, as Wendy has said on the committee and John has asked for some of this, but the masses, who we get to listen on, just how we come up with some of the staffing and calculations. I'll break it down pretty easily for all so that I don't get any more of these crazy calls. We know we're going to still get them, but some of the basics that I think we've covered more than enough so people kind of understand where we're at in Sheriff's Contract and how it works for the city of Calamasa. And so, with that, in the overview of city services, so as the city manager spoke on, with every city, we recognize public safety is obviously an extensive part of the budget. For Calamasa, it comes in at about $2.5 million. That piece of things for just now law enforcement services, contracting with the Sheriff's Department covers that full complement of services. So, should my crew call upon, you name it, SWAT, investigations, canines, helicopters, quite frankly, liability indemnification and other things that happen in our world, as with law enforcement, our lawsuits are very high. Whenever we put hands on people, those become a natural piece of our investigation to make it so that we're within policy and those kind of things. But our lawsuits remain high and just difficult in these challenging times of law enforcement. And so, that part of things in contracting with the Sheriff's Department really does take care of that indemnification piece that I'm always concerned with in mitigation for us in general, but more so with the city. And so, those are those big parts of things. As I get asked, what's the benefit of having the Sheriff's Department as the contract? Well, I can call upon the helicopter immediately. I can call upon a wide variety of things that happen immediately for us in that force multiplier. And so, that becomes the good part of it. As I get asked about what is roughly, where do we end up at in staffing related to our contract? And so, at that 2.5 million mark, that contributes the staff salary and all of the costs that go into what the Sheriff's Department cost is. I get asked, where do we run on a daily contract of 24 hours a day, seven days a week, adding a pop officer, adding a CSO that I'll explain a little bit? We run roughly at 105% of contract. And I'll explain what that is when I'm asked, well, how does that work for, what does that mean? Do extra bodies come? Is that why we go over budget? That is actually what it is. So, when a deputy sheriff for us rolls to a call where our pop officer works, maybe Monday through Thursday, we're on 410s, or Tuesday through Friday, or he adjusts per whatever the mission is for the weekend, maybe we have weekend operations. That's separate than the actual patrol officer who is on 24/7/365. When Deputy Hinkle isn't available for backup, all of our domestic violence calls, some of the more violent calls that we have, those require extra officers. When those officers roll in for me from the county, I staff neighboring bodies in Cherry Valley, bodies in Cavazon, bodies in Morongo and places like that. Once we roll past a 30-minute mark where that deputy sheriff is required, that incurs an extra cost, and that's a relationship obviously between the county and all of our contract cities. And so, that is where we roughly run at about 105%. We've talked extensively, and I'll speak a little more to it, as I balance the calls for service with where we're at in population-wise on a constant basis. And we'll talk about some of that and see that we really are at the right mix right now, and that 105% is much more acceptable at when you do the math on the cost of a deputy sheriff, multiplying that out over the year of, let's say, we're about 100 and some thousand dollars over budget versus what I know and what we talk about, staffing a 24/7 deputy gets us a net cost closer to a million. And we're not there yet, and quite frankly, I'll show some of the things that we don't need to get there yet. It's a reflection of our growth, and some of that is within my PowerPoint on purpose so we can kind of see for everybody where we're at and where we're trending. That next bullet point down kind of gets at what we're always looking at. We have had an escalating calls for service the last several years that has now leveled off. And where, when I landed last July, we were looking at the last few years, I saw we were at 4,000 calls a year, then 5,000, then 6,000, the last two years, we've been at 7,000 calls for service. That has leveled off, and it's funny, city manager and I were talking about it, that goes right along with where our development has been. As it has slowed in homes, Summerwind is built out largely for now, as we've seen, and some of those things. I anticipate calls for service to grow in the future, but right now, it really matches where we're at in the overall trends as we move forward. Getting back to that right side of the slide of our deputy sheriff being on 24/7/365, Calamasa years ago smartly added a problem-oriented policing officer. So, Deputy Hinkle becomes that catch-all. As deputy sheriffs respond to domestic violences, thefts, you name it, the wide variety and myriad of calls that the group gets, obviously, alarm calls at people's houses, he really becomes our immediate problem solver for some of those other things that go on in the city that maybe they don't rise to a detective level, maybe they rise to, hey, it's a nuisance situation. Hey, I'd like to do more operations at the park, you name it. But he becomes that catch-all officer, and it was smart of us to go for that years ago to make it so that there is immediate support for the standard deputy sheriff. And then lastly, that piece for us, the community service officer becomes, I will say, invaluable in, she has historical knowledge of the city that I often smile at when I hear the guys talking in the station of, hey, I had this stolen out of Stater Brothers, and all they knew was an orange shirt, and Sharon, our CSO, she's spot on with her historical knowledge. Oh, that's Jim, and Jim lives under the freeway behind the this, and I talk to him all the time. Those are those pieces that become invaluable. Her job is much more entailed than that in handling traffic accidents, in taking people to jail so that the deputies can stay in the city. That's an important point, I've been asked that. Of, well, oh, my gosh, if they arrest somebody, they're gone. No, we have a CSO for that. That's the nice part of being smart about our staffing that makes it so she assists in all those things. And so, that part of it, she truly becomes invaluable for those non-suspect contact calls and things that don't necessarily require a deputy sheriff. That's that, I will say, third tier for us. If we had the deputy, then a problem officer, deputy, and also a CSO. And so, that makes up Calamasa's staffing. I'll get into some of the more percentages as we go. With the city itself, we're kind of now, I've heard the city manager say a tale of two cities where we have, I will say, the older region of Calamasa, and I'll call it the Boulevard and Myrtlewood and those kind of things. And then we have our new area off Cherry Valley Boulevard. That is how we're split, and I've set us up for future growth. We're not there yet, but in the Sheriff's County radio system, I make it so that we have a Calamasa 20 and 21 beat for naturally what's going to occur and as we move along, and I have to adjust boundaries and kind of forecast where we're going to be in the future, that's where some of that comes in, in our area, where I can start having a placeholder in the Sheriff's mapping system and dispatch system to make it so that we will have beat cars in our future when we build some of those areas out beyond where we're currently at. And so, it becomes a placeholder for me as the city moves forward. Calls for service by area, that 70-86, you can kind of see the totals. I just put it there for us, for Cavazon Station, as I run a county area contract, I run a Morongo tribal contract, and then the city of Calamasa contract for us. And that's kind of the breakdown of where the Cavazon Station ends up at on where we track for number of calls for service. And like I said, I have watched our calls level off in the last two years. And it was funny, it really does go right alongside of some of that housing development and those kind of things. Our crime areas, I always get asked, well, where are the main areas? In most cities, as we are a bedroom community, it is often the business areas. And as you can see, it kind of matches on there. If we're in the top-left portion of the map quadrant there for our Boulevard, and now on the bottom side off of my Stater Brothers Shopping Center off Cherry Valley Boulevard. Some of those other sporadic ones, they're just that. I largely look at what they are, do we have any trends in those areas? There are property crimes, there are crimes of opportunity, people not locking their car at night and things like that. For us, our two areas really that we focus on the most is along the Boulevard where all the businesses are, and then now with our creation of obviously the Stater Brothers Shopping Center off Cherry Valley and the things that that brings over there, again, along the lines of those crimes of opportunity, people pulling on car door handles while you're shopping in the grocery store and stuff like that. Response times, we often get asked, how does it work? People ask me, well, I heard we have a Priority One call. What's a Priority One call versus a Priority Two? I look over at our averages, they're on the far right, and right now for 2023, it's at 7.1 minutes. Now, mind you, this is an average. Sometimes, maybe Hinkle is right around the corner, maybe the other officer is around the corner. Other times, maybe one of them is at the jail, maybe one of them is off Cherry Valley Boulevard, and we have something obviously on the, I'll call it, the north end of the city. It just kind of depends. But we're always targeting an area, and I think I've heard the Fire Chief talk about, getting in the sixes on that Priority One response. For us, and so everybody understands, Priority One calls for us are things that are immediate violence in progress. Think of robbery, rape, and all of those terrible things. We don't get them very often, but aggravated assault does fall in that. That'd be somebody with, using a weapon against another. And then we drop from there. Priority Two calls become your non-life-threatening things, maybe a minor fight, maybe a disturbing the peace, maybe somebody's calling on a fraud. And then from there, we get a Priority Three call where it's completely non-life-threatening, and a Priority Four call, we would call a past call. Past calls are what often the CSO will take for us if there is no potential for suspect contact, meaning we go away from the weekend and we come home, and maybe you found your garage broken into, and it seems as the people who call often say, oh, I already checked the garage, there's nobody around. Those would be things that we can either put to the CSO, or we can even direct them to online reporting, or we even with the Sheriff's Department have what we call a teleservice where if they feel more comfortable not doing online, that they can call in and somebody will answer and take the report from there. I get that a lot for kind of where we trend on that. Our calls for service breakdown by month, I look at this a lot regarding, police chiefs look for, what is our hot times? Do I have to staff more a certain time? Do I have to adjust? Do I have to go to a city and ask for more money? Because certain months are way off the charts compared to others. I think we're all finishing, a very good example, we're all finishing Stagecoach Weekend. Stagecoach Weekend for the Indio and lower Coachella Valley area, you have two weekends of Coachella, and you have Stagecoach to follow. That's a massive staffing increase for us. Quite frankly, we draw from all over the region, all over the entire county to get there. We know the month of March becomes extremely heavy going into April. Looking at Calamasa for us, we're a very balanced city. I feel very blessed for the fact that we don't have large crime trends. We don't have large spikes, and that's what we're looking for as we break down our calls for service and how we respond to them. Going on to the next slide, if you look at a calls for service breakdown by time of day and also by week, again, on the left would be our day of the week, we're pretty balanced. The important part for me is the one on the right. As Councilmember Manley and I have talked about, in our future, where would be best for us to grow for possibly adding an extra officer, extra hours, or those kind of things in future years? You can see for me, it's a pretty easy chart for us as we get those calls starting at 8:00 a.m., and they roughly start to die off around 9:00, 10:00 p.m. And so, that midnight to 8:00 a.m. hour for us, calls for service is very low. And so, those parts of things in the future are easy for any of our future law enforcement officials to look at and see that, no, that's not the smart time that we would add hours and those kind of things for us as policing during that time, or I'll say, activity is very low. Calls for service breakdown per 1,000 residents. I'm going to get into some math real quick, and I'm going to do the math because it will make it easier to have us put on record as I get asked this a lot. And so, as we look at this, I'm going to move it to where we come at a median, we come in right at where we want in how many calls for service breakdown per 1,000. I'm going to look at the next slide, and I'll come back to both. The next is calls per service per patrol officer, and this is set about over the course of a year. And then the next slide after that goes to calls for service breakdown, Priority One calls per patrol officer. All of these go towards a staffing model of, I get asked, what is our, are we .5 per 1,000? Are we .4 per 1,000? I heard this city was .7 per 1,000. So, everybody understands that's listening to us on the outside, and doing this formula is pretty easy if you just walk along with me, and they can do it themselves. As a staffing per 1,000 model is used across the nation, for us, that formula for contract hours is what begins a process for understanding where we break down on our .5, .52, whatever it is per 1,000 citizen. The city of Calamasa, this tells me to start how many officers I need to run a 24-hour contract for the city of Calamasa. So, doing that, I do 24 for the city of Calamasa, times 365 days in a year, and I divide that by 1,884, my actual working hours of a deputy sheriff in a year, not counting vacation and those kind of things. These are actual working hour deputies. That number gives me 4.6 officers. I know back at the shop, as I'm doing my own math in staffing, for what does it look like to staff Calamasa at 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the year? I end at 4.6. Now, taking that, the next step, what everybody asked me on the, what is that point X number per 1,000 that Calamasa is at? We take that 4.6. The city already added a pop officer of Deputy Hinkle. That now gives us 5.6. Now, I know I need 5.6 officers to roughly run the city of Calamasa where we're at in our current staffing model. You divide that number, 5.6, by our population of roughly 11,000. That ends at a .000, and we end at a .050. Multiply that times 1,000, and we as the city of Calamasa end at a .5, I think we end at .51 actually. There's a percentage that's added in for the CSO.
That number, that slide, if you want to go a few slides forward, yeah.
Is that where it ended?
Yeah. Let's keep going. One more, one more. Yep, there it is. So, this, so just so everyone's clear to you, on the previous slides also, I removed all the city names from that, but those are all of the Riverside County contract cities. So, they're listed here, they're not necessarily in the same order as you're showing here. It's from lowest to highest on each of those charts, but I did remove the cities so I didn't want to, you know, incriminate any city out there. But, and also, we don't want to reveal too much of their data, but we did want to show kind of a comparison of where we are compared to the other Riverside County Good. contract cities.
Good. And so, as we end at that, what turns out to be the .51 number percentage per 1,000, it very much tracks us right in the middle amongst the other contract cities. We're not way below staffing, as I often hear us get accused of, as I track other areas outside of our area. I speak to other city managers and my counterparts regarding some of those San Bernardino County places that I see some .45, some .41, some .65, some .61s. And then I come back to Riverside County and where we end at. We truly trend right near the middle for our own staffing as to where we're at. And that's what I'm always analyzing for us, looking at and gauging it against that, well, we don't have enough officers, we don't have enough officers. No, actually, we do. And statistically, as we've looked in some of the graphs and charts that I've shown, we end at an area where it was a very good job on going through this process and causing me to pull up this slide as speaking to Will and some of the others in, well, what are our officers actually doing? We police chiefs want to know if, are they completely taxed and overburdened with actual citizen calls that they can't get to anything else? And this, breaking down all of those stats over the course of the year, this was very eye-opening. I hadn't done it until he said it. It was very eye-opening and quite frankly, pleasing to the fact that out of our 7,000 calls, we have 57% are citizen-initiated calling 911. There's actually 43% of the time. So, almost 3,000 of those calls were 4,000 are citizen-initiated, where it is completely deputy-initiated. That would be Hinkle-initiated, that would be the other deputies who are doing routine, not just patrol, but finding bad guys, taking people to jail. All those visibility matters that we talk about, I was very happy to see it because we're always gauging, we've talked a lot about, hey, we want more visibility in the city of police, and that will lessen some of our impact of, oh, my God, there's not enough cops. Well, the nice part is with this, it really drove home a point for me that we are obviously trending in the right spot for, hey, there's plenty of driving around. And in fact, there's a hell of a lot more of them actually taking people to jail, doing area checks, checking parks, checking our businesses, and that kind of stuff. So, it was a very good metric for me in kind of, I see where we're trending patrol call-wise, how does it break down for their actual activity? And so, it was good. It was a very good slide for us in us trending right where I was hoping we would be. Going on to the next slide, I often get asked a lot, how do we fare in our Part One crimes? Meaning what we report to the FBI nationally, every police agency does. And I'd be happy to say for 2023, on the far right, we were down across the board. If you look at the very bottom, we had a few more vehicle burglaries, 29 compared to 21 and 22. But overall, all of the things that we report to the FBI that they track us statistically as a city as to how are your crime trends and where are you at criminally as a city? Is crime out of control and taken over, or are you managing it? It shows we're quite frankly, in front of it, is the nice part, and hopefully that continues. Obviously, that's a big partnership between us, the city, and the community. But as you can see on that slide, especially on the far right, that's where we kind of track our metrics. We're down in all categories.
Captain Peterson, on that real quick, too, when you're talking about vehicle burglaries, oftentimes, I think we've talked about this a lot, it has to do with the doors, closing the doors, right?
Completely, absolutely, absolutely. Sadly enough, those basic crimes of opportunity are still everything we fight all the time, whether it is residences, which sad to say, even in this day and age, still surprises us. Uh, whether it is residences, which sad to say, even in this day and age, still surprises us. And, and, what do you mean, you don't lock your door? We, we live in California. I hate to say, I have friends in other states, oh, we never lock our door. Well, we've all grown up in California, we lock our doors. That's the reality of it, just like we want them to lock their cars. Yet the, the unlocked car door is still the number one.
I even lock my door when I'm getting gas.
Hey, hey, I, I understand.
You've all seen the video where the guy sneaks in.
Yes, they sneak into the backseat, of course, of course.
Not gonna do that.
No, very much so. It's still the crime of opportunity and so that vehicle burglary is still. We're going into State of Brothers and we're just leaving the car unlocked. And I have, you name it, we, we get a wide variety of calls that sometimes we're scratching our head of, you don't have $100,000 sitting in the backseat in a grocery bag. Oh yeah, we just came from Morongo. And, and we're all sitting there scratching our head of, and you left it on the backseat in a grocery bag? Oh, it was inconspicuous. Hmm, look at that. How, how, how not good for things now. Uh, that, that is the reality of it. And so those pieces kind of rise and fall for us, but just on that overall right column, it was very good for me to see that, yes, our trends are, are down across the board and, uh, and we're doing very well. I, I, I want that to continue, obviously. Uh, going on to the next, we're, we're doing always comparisons on where do we do our numbers? How do they compare to the rest of the county now? Not just on a national level, but where do I trend in our numbers across the board for us? Again, uh, outside of vehicle burglary, we're just doing extremely well. And so tho- those parts of things were, uh, were a blessing for us in our profession, looking at where we trend. Uh, this comparison allows me to look at some of the other cities as I've been asked. Well, I, I can speak to some of the other cities around us. It's tough because obviously every city has a different identity. I look on this and I see that Indian Wells has only 4,700 residents, but they have more staff. Well, they're also one of the, the richest per capita cities in the nation. And so tho- those parts of, of looking for and how do we compare to? It's tough, it's tough. Just providing kind of some clarity and balance for me and kind of checking where we trend versus other places. And as I look at some of those, uh, I, I put us right on par with Canyon Lake and it turns out, I feel, we do a better job because not just the 24 hours a day, but we saw the, the smartness back when in adding a pop officer, in adding a CSO and, and those parts for us have made us in front of them. And so those parts kind of for me are, are where our staffing lands and staffing models. And that's where I kind of check it against my peers.
And another thing on, on that real quick, just a couple of cities. Actually, if you wanna go to the next one, actually, I think demonstrates these more. You look at this four cities on the right, they all have something in common. They're all out in the Coachella Valley and they're all resort communities, right? So doing a, a metric per 1,000 residents, permanent residents, right? Not just residents, permanent residents, because you do have a lot of snowbirds in a lot of these cities too. So there's more residences, not a lot, not all of them are, have people in them, um, 12 months a year. And you also have a lot of tran- a transient, um, population. So you have a lot of resorts here, people come visiting. And so they obviously need more resources for, to, to counteract all those people coming in and out of their city all the time. So that's, I think, kind of a unique piece of those four cities on the right there.
The next question I get asked a lot. Uh, Councilman Manley did a good job in adding this in. Our flock cameras, how did flock cameras added to the city? Uh, how do they help the overall network? And I watched this big spike because the way flock gave it to us, I couldn't necessarily fit it. But, but what it turned out with our cameras is we get 1.2 million reads a month. It was unbelievable. Cause I said, oh, oh, give me, give me a good graph of, of the year. And the guy started laughing and he's like, oh, you have no idea what your monthly numbers are. I'm like, no, no, you know, I, I mean, Calamasa's a small town, so is it a few thousand? And they were laughing. And so needless to say, yes, on adding into the network of flock cameras for us, on our 1.2 million reads per month, a perfect example of it and how it fits into the overall for us is we have a bar in town. That bar had a shooting in the middle of the night. The guys jumped on flock immediately and we caught the bad guy all the way in Brawley. It was fantastic. We had little to zero information. The flock cameras provided us a direction and then they provided us now as we are in the network and we walked a officer all the way down, down to Brawley, California in obviously lower part of California and caught the bad guy in it. Uh, it has been fantastic and I can't say enough on the things of, of the good part of an investigative tool that I was so happy that before I got here, you guys agreed to obviously get us signed up with that. It's been exceptional. Uh, I, Hinkle talks regularly on their operations in, in solving and getting that investigative direction for us. It truly modernized some of those pieces for us in policing that were already in place and added us into that network. And so that part of things, I, I will say, it was very eye-opening in recognizing a single month was 1.2 million reads in, in just our small town in Calamasa is incredible, so. Homeless, another piece I get talked about a lot. And I'll say it right now, I wanted the pictures for shock value. No, these are not our city. The reality of, and why I put these slides up there is I, we, we fight a lot the question of just go arrest them. There are, and it's my job, as it is Lieutenant Olson's job, to protect us from liability. And so as I watch some of the others around me do different things and partner with their city on different plans and what to do, time and time again, and I put some of those cases up there just for the lead slide, these cities have lost and lost badly in, no, we can't just arrest them. No, we can't rough them up and get them out of the city. Uh, those, those parts of things sadly enough, um, they're homeless for their own reasons. We as a state have done a very good job in providing a wide variety of services for them. This slide talks about, and I added in there because people ask me about, well, what about all their property? Can't you just, uh, you know, throw it on the trunk of the car and stuff like that? No, it's not that way either. Cities have lost time and time again to the tune of, we have to care for them, we have to care for their property and everything else. Well, as many of us know, there's a lot that go along with some of these people, obviously. And I'm not gonna crack the door on mental illness or drugs or some of the other things that concern us. But I get asked a heck of a lot as we fight it, we just want them gone, why can't you arrest them? The city, the county, obviously connected into the network of the state, we have a vast, vast amount of resources. I will say the state has done a very good job on that. It is always the flip side of that equation in that the homeless person has to accept them. And that's where we really end up at. As I move to the next slide, in not just basic services, I couldn't fit the 20 pages of, of things that we can do for the homeless. However, as, as people have asked me, well, I heard the county started a new home court. What is home court? Home court is another program to where maybe they're not committing a criminal act, but we can take them down a different path. I equate this to the county entering with the DA's office in a drug court path that was repeat offenders and things like that. We are trying different angles as a county of how we can assist in getting them services. That is the main thing. And so as partnering with the Sheriff's Department, we tap into our homeless outreach team. We're on the phone with them regularly as Hinkle often is the one that contacts these people for us in trying to get them out of our ravines, out of our creeks, out from wherever. But they have to accept it. And that's the part that I just wanted to, to bring home for us that, yes, it's a call I regularly take. It's a call I regularly deal with. Our homeless population is very low, I can happily say, and the guys do a good job of, I will say, maintaining somewhat of a relationship as best you can with them. Thus far, the ones who have stayed have wanted to stay. And it's fun and funny in that human dynamic and that's a social piece for us that we are constantly being asked about and working through. I just wanted to put it out there, no, we can't just arrest them. So I'll answer more questions as we get to some of that. But, uh, for, for the next slide and an important one, as Councilman Manley brought this up and, and we, we, we discussed it a lot, as, uh, Councilman Hewitt, we, we went back and forth on. Recently, and he brought up, Evan, would it make some, some, adding some city ordinances to our future, setting us up for having other tools for us as we grow? As we grow in size, as we now have a Cherry Valley Business Center as well as the Boulevard? There were some things that were easy, low-hanging fruit that I'll want some of your discussion when we're done on what can we add in? I, I add item number one on there, the adoption of, the county went to a catalytic converter ordinance. And basically it is making it easier for law enforcement where if we contact you and you have a catalytic converter in the car, that we can now arrest you and do other neat things with it. It's a very low-hanging fruit and it would be one that I would request for us to create, add in the county's ordinance to our city ordinance, uh, put it in our language and move forward on. Some of the other ones there, uh, for discussion, as Councilman Manley and I and Councilman Hewitt had very good discussion on those, uh, I, I would like us to look at adding in to future proof us on some of these things that are often nuisance homeless related things that maybe we don't have teeth to and the guys need some teeth. Those are creation of a camping on public property prohibited ordinance, creation of urinating, urinating and defecating in public being prohibited, creation of public nuisance related to shopping carts prohibited, or a creation of no smoking in public parks prohibited. I don't necessarily need all of them. I just wanted to bring it to councils so we can talk about. I think number one is very easy. I think getting, uh, two more of those would make it so that we start to move in a trend that adds some of these city ordinances for us to kind of, as we grow and build, that they're already in place. And so that would be for consideration in your notes as we come to the end of my part here shortly that I'd like us to circle back to. Any questions? Or, or come back and turn it over to fire? Uh, I leave that to you guys, but I could certainly answer any of those questions that I saw some of you writing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting and appreciated the data too. I like that, I wrote down that, uh, that formula in my notes.
Good, good, good. No, I get asked it a lot, as I know you guys do, absolutely.
So, um, the homeless situation, I know you get a lot of questions on this, so do we. Interesting, the Supreme Court is currently even hearing a case on Supreme Court. Uh, the Supreme Court's hearing a case on homelessness and how cities can, uh, better, uh, or what, what is, I don't remember the exact details of the case, but I know that they are considering the case for how cities can interact with the homeless situation and ordinances and laws that they can enact. And so getting back to your list that you had up here, I'm wondering, are some of these ordinances necessary for, for actually, you know, policing? So for example, you know, the creation of a urinating and defecating in public prohibited ordinance? Do we really need to have an ordinance for, for something to happen if you?
The, these were some of the ones for us to kind of begin discussing. Because you're right. Section 314 of making it lewd acts in public, well, we often have used that through the years. But someone has to be a complainant, it can't be law enforcement.
I see.
And so some of those pieces are why cities have made it so that there are things in place for us to be able to act on immediately for ourselves because we can't be a victim, I'll say, unless it's a violent crime or things like that. And so some of these pieces, we can't necessarily be the person because we can't be the ones that get our feelings hurt, it has to be another. And so it, it is, it is kind of for consideration on just some of that. As I look at, of course, San Francisco comes up. Of course, some of these other places come up that though they may have it, it looks to us from the outside that it's failing miserably. I, I agree. I just, I offer that for some of our discussion on, hey, does that help future proof us on some of these interaction of our cops?
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that just from a policy perspective that the council should consider is, you know, do we, we wanna give, we want to enact things that make sense and that are going to actually, you know, produce results, right? Positive results that we're looking for. Um, you don't wanna get so bogged down in, in passing ordinances that it becomes overwhelming or we're passing laws just to make it like, looking like we're doing something. And I think that anything, any, any, anything that we do as a city should be meaningful, right? Not just to do it, just to do it. So I think that's the kind of consideration that when we look at these, that, that, that should we, we should think about.
No, I appreciate you providing the list for us to give us a starting place for the discussion.
Councilman, we, we went, I, I took Redlands, I took City of Riverside, I took City of Orange, uh, did a, did a myriad of, okay, hey, let's look at some of the things on their books that, that just were, especially the, the catalytic converter, that was an easy one, quite frankly. Because for us, uh, we could stop you in the middle of the night and it's sitting on the front seat, it doesn't necessarily mean that we could hook you for stealing it without having a victim and those kind of things. Well, that ordinance at least starts you down a path of, yeah, yeah, we are gonna detain you and we are gonna make your life uncomfortable while we figure out and buy us time for a real crime to come out of it and stuff like that. That was an easy one. But as I looked at some of these other cities and what they have in place, City Riverside had, had no, uh, no, no urinating, defecating on, on public monuments. Well, we don't have to worry about that. But they have statues and they have things like that and memorials around the city. I know we have some of those. And so it, it just, it became some of that for, okay, maybe for future consideration, we wanna talk about some of that.
Sure. And for the encampment, same thing, um, creation of an ordinance regarding camping on public property prohibited. Presently, if we see somebody on public property and they're camping, if we don't have an ordinance and no one calls and complains about that, then there's nothing.
And if we ask them to move along and they say no? The, the reality is, though I recognize the public expectation is just make them, no, we're looking for something that obviously indemnifies all of us and has teeth that we could fall back on.
Correct, absolutely. That's helpful. Now with the data you shared, I was very pleased to see that we're toward the median of sworn deputies per population. That's good to hear because that is sometimes the optics that people think that they, they see less deputies, that we must be understaffed. But that's not what the data shows.
It's really not the case. It, it is really not, the, the data very much shows it's not the case.
Absolutely. And so, um, also with the, with the crime and the history in the city, very low. So in your opinion, it, you know, if you had a wish list of what Calamasa could, could have and you, what would you recommend for the city? Or is the status quo working for us and there's nothing?
The, the, as he and I talk about it a lot and as we, because of his history, talk about it a lot, the status quo is working right now. And that's the reality. As we develop more, as we, we know more houses are coming and those kind of things and that'll drive, well, uh, you said, new businesses are opening off Cherry Valley Boulevard, as we all know, and those kind of pieces are happening. I agree, that's future for us. But, but the numbers do drive that for now, things are working very well, actually.
Thank you. Yeah. That concludes my questions, Mayor.
I just have one question, you didn't mention it. At a meeting we were all at the other evening, somebody said that they were busing homeless people to our area and dropping them off.
Yeah, yeah, I, we, we can very much say that's not the case. And so those practices of, what, what I will say, uh, those practices of, people ask me, well, when you get released in jail, uh, you get a bus ticket or you get a? Yes, the state has enacted some of those things. So if, if Wendy gets out of jail and says, oh, I live in Calamasa, well, we're, we, we are required for getting assistance to that person to get them to where they're from or those kind of things. But in, in, I, I get the blanket, uh, subject as well as, oh my God, people are dropping off. No, it's not the case, very, very much not, yeah.
That's, I just wanted that to be known for the record.
I just wanna thank you for your presentation, it's very good. You know, and it's, uh, it's a nice to know that we can think about maybe giving you something with some teeth to help your crew out.
I'd like us to come back to that. That, that does, it, it makes a lot of sense on the city ordinance and some of these simple ones that, that it does help us for future matters.
Well, I'm surprised I haven't anybody camping on my place. You know, and it's just wide open.
I thought a lot about the park when we opened Summerwind and some of those places where some of these people park at Tractor Supply, State of Brothers, and I recognize they're public property and the guys asking them to move along and sometimes they've said, oh, I've talked to the manager of Tractor Supply. Whether it's true or not, it's 2:00 AM. So I know we're not making that call, obviously. But I look at some of our new parks and some of that stuff that I thought, okay, we need something along those lines. It makes a lot of sense.
And we'll have to discuss a little further.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
I didn't have any specific questions, but are we gonna kind of wait till the end to have some, as far as some direction and further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, so there's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna go into the fire department now and has a presentation and then kind of talk about. and then kind of talk about some of the things that we're going to use, some ideas that we have to kind of integrate both of those services and create additional presence in the city. You know, probably, you know, like I said, we're trying to match maximizing the resources that we have and provide value and provide, you know, solid public safety services to the community. So I'll put that, I'll turn it over to our fire chief.
Thanks, boss. And mayor members of the council, we'll start off the 2024 Fire Department Update Annual Report. And I'd like to start off with the twenty-three, twenty-four deliverables. There are quite a few of them that we've been able to accomplish. As council knows, we placed into service a hundred-foot aerial ladder quint ladder truck. We were able to obtain a fifteen-hundred-gallon tactical water tender through an F E P acquisition, and that's federal excess property through the the federal government. Placed into service, we started with twenty-four self-contained breathing apparatus through the, we were awarded the FEMA AFG grant. And then the next two are the big ones because they were deliverables and seen as strategic objectives during the last strategic planning process. It's been the vision of the city going back to the formation of the fire department to place into service an advanced life support paramedic program. And as council well knows, we were able to do that January twenty-ninth of this year. We currently have on staff three firefighter paramedics and an engineer paramedic that that are providing service. We were also able to fill the third duty battalion chief is represented by the chief officers with me today. That gives us full staffing that we'll talk about in a few minutes. We recently replaced the two thousand and three surplus county engine that was inherited when we developed the transition to the city department. New type one pumper is in the comm shop having radios installed as we speak. We're upgrading radio and MDC equipment. It's an ongoing project, very costly project. We've obtained a third command vehicle, giving us some duplicity and redundancy and being able to respond to multiple incidents at once for from the command level. A big one for us is completing the policy manual revision. We did that through CERA, our our underwriter. We contracted out, use a company called AP Triton, which is a widely used consultant company. And we've realigned all of our department policies, our operating policies and guidelines. And they are at at or exceed the industry standard as we know them to be. Another large accomplishment, a lot of credit goes to Battalion Chief Deputy Fire Marshal Rodriguez. We revised the local hazard mitigation plan through Cal O S, Cal O E S and FEMA. And why that's so big for us is anytime we go to mitigate a problem and then we look for remuneration, funding, offsetting some of our expenses and or applying for grants, we have to have that document put in place. Jerry worked extremely hard on that and we just recently got that approved. And a side note, there are many other municipalities that are not up to speed within the government. We're we're ahead of the the eight ball on that one. This year, we've upgraded our employee personal protective equipment and implemented cancer prevention and exposure control. Our staffing model for our three point one million dollar operating budget, and I want to come back to that. You know, three point one this last year was a little bit of an increase. But I'm going to go back and talk about that AFG grant and some other deliverables on that. The AFG grant was for about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in grant funding that offset that that three point one. So in reality, I mean, we came out of pocket, but but it pushed it back down. You know, we're we're two point eight-ish with offsetting funding. We're always looking for the opportunities to supplement our our one-time and our ongoing cost. Staffing model with in-house, you know, the fire chief, obviously. We vacated the deputy fire chief position two years ago when we did a department reorg and established four battalion chiefs. The significance of that is we have an operations chief, training chief, an EMS chief, and then the fire prevention bureau. And as we talk over the next several minutes to come, we're going to talk about community risk reduction and the importance of those positions. With our current upper executive management team, we're able to provide a chief officer in the city twenty-four hours with backup. So there's, as opposed to some of our, what we've seen in some of our contract providers with the previous provider, it was anybody's guess as who you were going to get. In the city of Calamasa, you know, you're getting a a homegrown fire chief or or battalion chief with a backup in the city. We have three fire captains this last year. We kicked off and and appointed three apparatus engineers, permanent personnel assigned to the rolling stock that we'll talk about, all of our fire apparatus. That their primary job is to drive, pump and maintain the millions of dollars worth of equipment that we have sitting in our firehouse. Six firefighter medic positions funded and and allocated. And we're going to talk about what it means to to fill those positions and some of some of our challenges. And then the firefighter EMTs, we have three with an intern reserve program of seven positions. And we're going to talk about some recruiting retention and some challenges going down the road. So we have twenty-one full-time equivalencies with twenty-one full-time firefighting staff to include an administrative assistant that offsets some of the admin work that Darlene and company take care of in terms of risk management, human resources. Michelle takes some of the burden off of that to to round out the team. And then our seven intern reserves were always in, and I think council's heard me reach out into the county or into the into the city. We're looking to collaborate with the high school programs, the college programs, trying to employ kids that come out of the city, put them through the college system, the high school system, and then put them to work for us full time.
Can I just say something on that? I just had a meeting with the school superintendent, Kelly Binks, just this morning. And she was mentioning, she actually complimented you and and your staff on that program. It's made a big impact and it's been noticeable in the in the school district. So they they seem very happy with that.
Thanks, Will. So our apparatus status, you know, apparatus is expensive. I I came before council a few months ago and looked to replace a two thousand and three type one fire engine, a pumper, if you will. The cost when the city stood up, the cost of the the twenty sixteen E one type one pumper, I think the city was able to purchase that for for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a demo unit, extremely good deal at the time. You know, we went this last year and I I think we're upwards of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a stripped floor model, basically, and we have to build that out. You know, that's attributed to supply chain, you know, everything else with inflation and and supply chain issues. But you have a brand-new type one pumper coming that'll take the emergency one that we have. We'll turn that into a reserve engine. The current engine one will be placed in service as engine two oh one, will be the second station out of engine one. And then the truck, the 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 brand-new ladder truck that we're putting the finishing touches on, putting that in service. You have two reliable frontline pieces of apparatus with the third coming. The the F E P P pieces, the the brush engines and the water tender, brush engines, two thousand and three model. We'll be looking down the road to to try to replace that. And there's a little, I want to kind of dispel some of the myths. So we're mandated, or the guidelines are, not really mandated, although the recommendations, the guidelines that we know them to be is the National Fire Protec Protection Agency publishes guidelines for apparatus, equipment, personnel and everything that we do. We'll talk about our SWAT analysis in a few minutes. And some of those guidelines are slowly becoming mandates. But getting back to the apparatus, we have a a twenty eighteen type one or a type six patrol. We have a backup squad that was also F E P P. And then we have a a series of command vehicles for a total rolling stock of ten fire apparatus, frontline and command vehicles. As to where we started in twenty eighteen with two new command vehicles and two inherited pieces of equipment and a and a and a new engine. And we've been able to do that to maintain, with maintaining with the the operating budget, although the the one-time cost. So we're really trying, we're in a good spot going down the road for apparatus in in the next several years to come. We've got, engine one has been in service for for six, almost seven years. You know, it it'll be a true reserve or eligible, recommended for a true reserve piece in in three more years. We're in good shape with our apparatus. And we've been able to contract and and we have a good maintenance program, three reliable vendors to maintain our apparatus, close by to keep us in service. And and we're maintaining it unlike what we inherited and and some of the challenges and some of the expenses that we saw inheriting equipment. Statistics, I talked to council, give the reports monthly, and I'm going to do some comparisons. And since January of twenty eighteen, we've run a total of about ten thousand six hundred and thirty calls, six thousand medical aids, twenty-one hundred public assists, give or take, and three hundred and forty fires. And that trends about average. When, again, and I I compare the miscellaneous public assists and the medical aids, combine them for about seventy-five to eighty percent of our call volume as opposed to the fires. That we're trending. And just to give you an idea of what that looks like, in January of twenty eighteen, when we took over, we were running two thousand calls a year. In twenty nineteen, when U K I P A terminated our auto aid agreement for medical aids, that means we were running, we we noticed the call volume drop into twenty twenty, we're down to eleven hundred calls a year. Well, coming back to last year, we were up to seventeen hundred and eighty-five calls. So we've seen a significant increase of about a hundred percent backup or just about back up to where we were. Not quite, but almost back up to where we were when we were running automatic aid. And that's going to play into to some, you know, future slides here. The calls that we were running, again, forty to sixty percent of our calls outside of the city in the history of the city to U K I P A and to Belmont, we're running those calls in the city. Our call volume is increasing. This month, just, and and I'll talk about it in a second, some some statistics for this current month. And we see about, we're on trending about eleven percent increase. So the those calls for service continue to climb. Auto aid given, notwithstanding the lack of some of our aid agreements, we've still gone out of the city seven hundred and ninety-one times over the last, you know, six-plus years. And and that stays on track. Year-to-date, we've gone thirty-one times. Counsel fourteen of the times that we've responded out and we've only asked or received one, one mutual aid response into the city. So it's trending about the same, the offset there, you know, thirteen to one. The the next data point that I'll talk about that is of some concern is our average response arrival time. The time from dispatch, the time of dispatch to the time of arrival is is pushing seven minutes. We're we're close to seven minutes and I'll attribute that and refer back to Evan's slide. You know, most of our call volume is in that Cherry Valley Roberts area. The the new Stater Brothers and the and the park takes most of our our calls, our our medical aid responses to that portion of the city. Some of our our data points, most of our data points, I didn't pull the, I didn't want to hit you with a bunch of different graphs and whatnot, but all of our data is captured from Image Trend. Where all of our call volume, all of our data's been vetted through the Image Trend system that we use. Twenty twenty-three to 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 current, I'll just give you the current monthly update. Our total responses year-to-date are at six hundred and five. Last year, the same date, we're at five hundred and forty-five, about an eleven percent increase there, give or take. Medical aids year-to-date, we've run four hundred and two miscellaneous calls or public assist, a hundred and forty, for a total of five hundred and forty-two. Fire responses currently year-to-date, seventeen. Mutual aid responses given, thirty-one. Our water tender went out of the city this morning, responded to a vegetation fire, mutual aid request into Banning out in the Cabazon area. I think the crews are still out there on that. And again, we get, we get counsel about half the time that we respond. So we we make it fifty-fifty. And then, like I said, we, our year-to-date auto aid received is is, I'm sorry, year-to-month is one, one auto aid response into the city this month. And our our current response time again is at, we're at, right around six seventy-three, average response time. So almost seven minutes. And I'm going to talk about standards of cover and some strategic planning things here in a minute. And and getting into that, our current staffing, just what that looks like with twenty-one full-time equivalencies. Our current deployment, we cover our engine company with a captain, an engineer and a firefighter. That's called three O staffing. That's that's three suppression personnel. And then back up to that is is the the patrol, the the smaller type six pickup truck is covered two O with with two firefighters on that right now. And then we have a duty battalion chief, like I said, on 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 the job, working twenty or twenty-four, forty-eight hour shifts around the cover, around the clock coverage in the city. Get into that gap analysis kind of approach and I kind of want to just explain right now that, so giving you the annual update and then looking at the deliverables for what we've achieved in the last two deliveries being being the transition to ALS and the appointment of a third full-time battalion chief, we're at the position right now where it's time to consider what does a strategic plan look like for the city of Calamasa. A lot of our sister cities in the county are going through the same thing. The County of Riverside is prepared to go into a a strategic planning document. Riverside City just completed theirs, I believe, mirieta. And again, I'm understanding that the County of Riverside is is taking a look at their strategic planning process. And they're going to produce a document called a standards of cover document. And what a standards of cover document does is it outlines your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, timing. It gives you critical vulnerabilities and basically a roadmap to build out future services. Given the history and the time of our department, the size of our city and our call volume, I'm withholding that right now, but using the concepts for, from a an organization called the Center for Public Safety Excellence, CPSE, combining that data with the recommendations and the guidelines from National Fire Protection Agency as well as the I S O Insurance Services Offices, looking at what their requirements are and then comparing that against what we're getting out of planning and engineering, taking a look at our our general plan and specific plan initiatives and looking at what our staffing model would and could and should look like. And I've just got to say that we're, with the apparatus and the personnel that we have, we're very close to where we need to be for any of that projected growth. And I'm sure you'll have questions, but what, and and our focus and our mission is, is what are we doing in the city of Calamasa? What's our service need specifically? But I also have to take a step back and take a look as a regional partner, from a mutual or automatic aid perspective, how do we cover resources? And we'll get more into that when we talk about the SWAT analysis. So projected needs right off the the the, what we're trying to get to in that projected need component is it'd be great to get to a four O, having four persons on a on a full-time covered truck company, have the engine company with three duty battalion chief. And then as we grow the the fire prevention bureau, there's a question mark there because we've got some opportunities going down the road as to what that looks like. I threw facilities up because I threw facilities up because council is very well aware of our current fire station where we're at. I'm going to refer back to a standards of cover document crafted by then-fire chief John Hawkins in 2016 document, the 2016 Riverside County Fire Department Standards of Cover Document. And it lays out, it lays out the concentric circles and our response time. And effectively, 906 Park Avenue, Calamasa Station One effectively covers 50%, our response area, 50% covers UCAIPA. So if you took a big circle, I'd say 50% goes to that side of the county line. So that's a consideration. Taking that factor and looking at our response times to the southeast corner of the city, the desert lawn area, of how our increased response times are coming and some considerations in the future, the I-10 corridor work, the I-10 freeway corridor work is coming, I believe it's starting this summer, and then the interchange work, some of those vulnerabilities, we're going to have to consider those from a facility standpoint going down the road.
On that, I think maybe this would be a, we're at time to try and give maybe an update of where we are with that, with that permanent facility. And I think there's other things that can be addressed. And I don't want this to steal the thunder of this presentation a little bit, but I think it's a relevant point here. So as people may be aware, the permanent fire headquarters currently as it stands would be slated to go adjacent to the Oak Valley Town Center. And so the development agreement that we have with Oak Valley Development Company, among other things in the development agreement, was that they would sell a parcel of land for, to be used for the fire station at a reduced cost per square foot, and that the residential developer of Summerwind would be constructing the actual fire station. Okay? Well, as, and this is, and I'm going to, I can say, I can state these things because the, you know, the things that I'm about to state are public, is public information. So the Oak Valley Development Company is currently in Chapter Seven bankruptcy, which, voluntary Chapter Seven bankruptcy, which is a liquidation. So obviously, the development agreement not only outlined that fire station, but even if you have the fire station, you still need the roads that are associated with that. So that would be the continuation of Roberts Road, the extension of Singleton, that intersection, and then the interchange itself. Oak Valley was also conditioned to build all of that within their development agreement. So what the city's going through right now, and that's, and this is why people have not seen any development happening at this location for months because of everything that's happening behind the scenes with the developers. And the other developers are saying, well, they're, they were relying on Oak Valley Development Company to build that infrastructure. So the city has been, and I spent, as the council is very well aware, they know I've been spending a lot of my time just trying to navigate all of this information. So, you know, one of the things we're trying to navigate is, you know, it says permanent or temporary station. Well, at some point, you know, we would like to get our coverage for our fire department more central to our city sooner rather than later. And with this happening, with all of that in flux, we're looking at temporary solutions while that gets resolved, right? Because otherwise, if we waited that long, it might not be, you know, that might be a long time to wait. So we're exploring that, we're exploring how do we get the infrastructure to build, how we get the interchange built. We've got, I think we've got a beat on where we're going with the interchange in terms of funding it and shifting gears on that. But that's, you know, probably a big reason why people are seeing nothing happening is because they're, you have, you have one of the developers in bankruptcy currently, unfortunately. And it's just, it's kind of a sign of where the retail environment is because that's where the retail piece is what we're talking about here. And the retail market has changed a lot over the last 25 years, you know, in the year 2000, you know, 98% of sales were made in a brick-and-mortar store, and now that number's probably down to about 60%. And you combine that, the fact that wages are going up, the price of land is going up, now all of a sudden retailers need a much bigger demographic, they need a much bigger rooftop number to make retail pencil. And so, you know, and people always want to say, we want Trader Joe's, we want these other things, but there's a reality that we have to deal with when it comes to economic development and the realities of those, of those trends. So where that ties into our fire station again is that, that's why we're having to focus now on a temporary solution where we can try to get some of our resources more centrally located in the city while we wait to resolve and while we work through resolving that, where number one, the land for the permanent station, at least the residential development, we're still working through how that's going to get constructed and where it's going to get constructed. But as of now, the plan is still in the same place. But until that gets resolved, we're not going to, we're going to have to look at alternatives. So, there you go.
Thank you. So going back to the gap analysis, so we talked about current deployment, projected needs, facilities, and then as we go down the presentation, we're going to talk about a concept called community risk reduction. So, community risk reduction is a relatively, I don't want to say a new concept, but a newer concept. And the best way that I can explain community risk reduction is it's akin to problem-oriented policing. It's a holistic approach to problem solving and what the trend line has been, the Fire Prevention Bureau, and our city did not have a Fire Prevention Bureau. And although we got good service out of the last contract provider, our fire prevention records and history and the data and enforcement, the nicest way I'll say it is it's very humble. We're starting, and we've been working from square one. Again, giving credit back to Jerry, Jerry's been developing the bureau, we've been trying to reestablish things like pre-plans and inspections, and we've been trying to keep that historical data. So Fire Prevention Bureau historically is inspections, investigations, and investigations, I'm sorry, inspections, investigations, and education as a bureau responsibility. Some of the other responsibilities that are outlined in red that we learned is we inherited emergency operations center operations. We're responsible for that from an emergency management standpoint for the city. And part and parcel of that is the absence of a widely recognized program called Community Emergency Response Team. It's a grassroots program. Basically, the best way to explain is back to civil defense, taking care of your homes, your neighborhoods, and then to the larger good of the city. We are absent those programs, and that's why they're labeled in red right now. So I'll turn it over to Will.
Thank you, Chief. So when we're looking forward now in terms of how we move forward with some of these, these issues that we've been discussing, both on the police and fire side, first we want to look at who are we, what are our values? And so these are some of the ideas that I came up with, accountability, integrity, respect, and service. And I think those are kind of the cornerstone of what we, what we are as a service providers in everything that we do. Not just in public safety, but I think in everything that we do, these are things that we take very seriously. But another thing that has to be considered is our fiscal constraints, right? So, and this is why that, when we grow our services, it has to grow with our community because it has to grow with the tax base. So, you know, as our assessed value tax base grows, as our retail taxable base grows, that's where our revenue is generated because we certainly aren't looking to increase our tax rates. So the only rate increase tax revenue is to either increase the tax rates or the tax base. And so our focus has always been on the tax base. So what does the tax base look like? That's development. And so we want to make sure that as we grow, we grow in a fiscally responsible way and that we grow proportionally with that revenue growth rather than trying to grow ahead of it. You also don't want to fall behind it either because we do have an obligation and a duty to serve our public. So it's really just trying to create the most value that we can in utilizing our strengths to really try to, you know, and sometimes that, that takes a blending of both police and fire services and having them work together more integrated in certain areas. What makes the most sense for certain things that are quality-of-life issues, whether it's things like fire inspections, which is, you know, prevention, or code enforcement? Is there code enforcement, you know, options there too? Because that, there may be, or quality-of-life issues that can be addressed that maybe isn't the best use of law enforcement time. You can use other types of resources. And this is where, you know, when you look at, especially like the, you know, the community services officer is a, is a good example of that in our police services, it ends up being a force multiplier because she's taking care of things that, that means a sworn officer is now available to do other things that she's doing at a lower, at a lower price, right? So it's that kind of thing and meeting all of these statements of value, meeting these values and objectives, but doing it within our means. And that's a really important concept. So if you want to go to the next slide, I'm going to hand it back over to Captain Peterson who is going to go over SWAT analysis for law enforcement, and then Chief O'Connell will cover fire.
So for our public safety piece, and for those listening, our SWAT analysis, okay, management term for looking at your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And so as Lieutenant Olson and I were kind of going over this and looking at the city on a large-scale approach, I will say for us, and it brings, quite frankly, both of us a hell of a lot of pride, what, one of the primary strengths is our highly-trained deputies, whether it's Deputy Hinkle as our pop officer, or any deputy that is working our streets, we're one of the largest sheriff's departments in the nation, period. And so that part comes with a lot of, we run our own regional training center, we train all law enforcement in the region and out of state come to us. And so those pieces for, I can equip the guys with all of the latest cutting-edge technology and those kind of things that the sheriff has afforded us, it really is one of our strengths for us that I know when things happen in the city, it gives us a hell of a lot of confidence in the ability to handle it. And that's the very good part for that public safety piece, as people can sleep soundly at night for that part of things, it gives us a lot of pride. And so that really is one of our strengths that I see for us. Immediately, and I'm not aloof to the fact, as I look at some of our weaknesses, I feel, one of the large ones, and Will and I have talked about it, is that community relations increase. I'm a hometown guy, Hinkle's a hometown guy. We don't always have that with the officers. And it is a struggle for, I'm realistic about versus the fire department that is homegrown, I'm realistic about the fact that we do come in from the outside, and I am always fighting if I know Bill is going to be in the city all week, but all of a sudden Bill's wife gets sick, or we have somebody rupture their Achilles and they're out for a set time. Those kind of things just occur, and so I know I am constantly, as if our pop officer is a constant, my daily officers are not always the case. We may want it to be, and the lieutenant staffs for that, but I'm a realist about who actually shows up in the city and some of those kind of pieces. And so I am always struggling with in looking at that community relations increase. I know that's a weakness we have, that I'm always looking to bridge that gap as I talked to Hinkle about and Lieutenant Olson about. The next one's for us, opportunities. I think we're going to get to it shortly. Your fire chief came up with a very good concept towards us, I will say, bringing back a citizens-on-patrol program that is a very good opportunity for us and kind of shifting some of the dynamic and some of their focus. It's very good. We'll bring that shortly and speak more to that for both of us. And then that last one, and I get asked it a lot, well, what are true threats for us in policing for the city of Calamasa? As I see it, it really is a city growth related to our level of service staffing, as we have all talked about. And I recognize that's for a future piece as we track, Councilman Cervantes, where do we fall in officers per thousand related to calls for service and quite frankly, the fiscal impact? The fiscal impact, so everybody understands, they just think, oh, that's it. Captain, just get another officer in there. The reality of contract city policing works at, it boils down to a true hourly rate. That hourly rate contracting for a deputy sheriff on your street is about, okay, as he knows, we went to a recent rate talk with sheriff and everything else, currently it sits about $214 an hour. Well, I would go back to that as we look at a slide from earlier, if we do the math on $214 an hour, as I often get asked, well, where would we add that? Where would we, how would that play out? This right here tells us, this is that slide that had the calls for service versus the calls per hour. I know if we're going to in our future as looking at the actual money cost, where are we going to add? And Councilman Manley and I have talked about this, maybe it's a six-hour increase of a deputy sheriff, maybe it's a 12. Doing the math on us adding a 12 hours in a day, I don't need them from midnight to 8:00 a.m. As you could see, we have the large spike in calls for service starting at 8:00 a.m. And they go the rest of the day. They roughly drop off as we get into evening. And so I would look at 12 hours, Will has talked about this before, adding 12 hours to every day, 365 days a year, is near a million dollars. I do the math, it comes out 937,000. If I do six hours, it comes out 460,000. That's for the masses. And some of those brass tacks that I get asked a lot on, well, why don't we just, it's because it truly, there is a cost associated with any contract policing entity, and that's what that is. And so for us, that's why I'm always balancing, well, we're best in how many hours, Councilman Manley and I have talked about this before, me knowing that, well, that six-hour window from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., that is our highest call volume of the day, actually. And so that makes the most sense versus some of that. And so for us, as I'm looking at threats for our future, it really gets back to that calls for service related to our actual population growth and those kind of things.
And I do want to, just want to interject one real quick, anecdotally. So in preparing for today's presentation, and we also had a budget meeting earlier too with staff, I was telling our finance director this, I kind of went down a rabbit hole this past weekend, you know, just preparing for all these things. And, you know, I was looking at things like what-if scenarios, you know, and impacts of the budget, things like that on some of these things that we're talking about. And also, and then it got me thinking, you know, people say, I pay a lot of taxes, where do my tax dollars go? So it made me go down that rabbit hole about looking at, you know, even going up as far as federal income tax and state income tax and gas taxes and sales taxes and property taxes and vehicle license fees and all that stuff and how much you pay. And I found out how much actually comes back down to the city of the amount of taxes you pay, it's less than 10%. So, you know, and so when we say, you know, all these taxes, I agree, I can't disagree with people, but we do pay a lot in taxes. But, you know, for, you know, for the services at the local level, we're only getting, you know, we're getting less than 10 cents on the dollar. And so we're having to, you know, kind of play within that arena and try to provide the most services we can. You know, it's funny that, you know, only 10% of the taxes that you pay actually are seen directly at the local level in, you know, your streets, your parks, your, you know, your public safety services, and all those things that go into it. So I thought, it was just the next, interesting, and it took me way longer than I thought it would because I just kept going down the rabbit holes and rabbit holes and rabbit holes. So that was, that was my weekend, so anyway, chief.
Okay, from the fire department perspective for the SWAT analysis, the strengths, I'll get into first, absolutely without a doubt, one of our strongest, one of our biggest strengths is absolute local control. You know, we have the support of a great council and councils past and city staff, and we have the ability to be adaptive and gain that local control. Now, we're fiscally secure, you know, we go back, you know, we're in the top 10 rated cities for fiscal security in the state. That's a big thing to your fire chief. Believe it or not, being a hose dragger, we look at numbers and make sure that we've got the revenue to support our operations that are expensive. The third strength is, and this is going to tie into some of our challenges in the future, but we've been able to be successful because we have an outstanding culture. You know what my budget is, that I'm allocated and the opportunities and the challenges that we have. And I have my peer group that plainly, at first are like, how are you going to do it? And it's gone from how are you going to do it to, well, how is he doing it? And what are they doing? And how are they successful? And I've got to, I've got to toss it back to the city and give credit where credit is due. We have an outstanding culture. We set standards- We, we set standards internally, a high level of industry standard. We hold ourselves accountable, but we have a, an atmosphere, a family atmosphere, and we have the adaptability to take care of our people and do what many of my counterparts, many of the larger cities can't do. They can't take care of their people the way that we can. And that sets us aside from everybody else. May not stand for much with them, but it, it's everything to me. And we're prepared for growth. Go back a couple of slides maybe and take a look at the projected, projected need. So a truck company staffed with four, an engine company with three, that has the ability to cross staff a brush engine and/or a water tender. Why do we need to do that? So we're a full service, I, I'm not going to go out on the limb and be a braggart and say we're, we're all risk because we're truly not fully all risk and all risk department is fire, rescue, EMS and the hazmat component. There are things that we will always have to contract out for, hazmat's one of them. We're growing in, you know, fire, the fire disciplines, structural firefighting, vegetation fires, we're, we're pretty well versed in. Rescue and our, our use our urban search and rescue, our, our rescue components, we're, we're growing, we've added the resources, we're well on our way. What, we're poised for the future and I'll, I'll just talk about it and throw it out, throw spaghetti on the wall, as one of my battalion chiefs likes to always say. We're poised that if we were able to, that we could staff, we could transition and staff a second fire engine with three full-time equivalencies, three FTEs. So we're prepared for growth based on that, that revenue income, that growth that the city's prepared for. Kind of transitioning into the, the stuff we don't like to look at. One of our, our weaknesses and I'll put it together as weakness and opportunity, it's been a challenge for us with our cooperators agreements. You know, going back to, Ucaipa cut us off in 2019. We use terms like like-for-like and industry standard and, you know, that's a debatable topic that we could get into. I, I don't think it's necessary now, but I'm looking to improve cooperators agreements daily. I think that adding ALS adds a component and I'm just going to be really, really transparent here. I've met with my counterparts at the county level and the city levels on, on both sides of the county line. We have a couple of challenges and, and I'll just be, be frank about it, the things that hold us back from unend, our open-ended cooperators agreements has, has been what our, our retirement compensation package looks like for PERS and I'll just leave it right there, just being transparent and truthful with that. And then the fact that our guys are either represented or unrepresented and that goes down to the labor group influence. It's a challenge for us. And it shouldn't play into how we, how we go out and answer 911 calls or, or serve our oath of office. It's not part of fire scope in the state of California, but it's something that your fire chief contends with and looking for opportunities to overcome. And again, I'll give the credit back, the guys sitting to my left in the white shirts helped me out with that and are a great resource to overcome those challenges, to, to train the youth, our young department to take us into the future. Retention recruiting is, is a challenge. You know, we're retaining, we have an underserved workforce as it is. Nobody wants to do blue collar work. The vacancies in the fire service, and I'm surprised that Evan hasn't talked about it in law enforcement, the, the openings statewide, the opportunities I could only have dreamed of having, you know, when I was in my early twenties. There are more positions than there are qualified bodies. So supply and demand, right? Paramedics are at a premium. Trained up firefighter recruits, like I said, there's, there's more jobs than there are, than there are trained recruits. Where that plays over as, as a threat is, is maintaining those folks. And I'll talk about unfunded mandates. Unfunded mandates comes in many forms and I'll just talk, you know, we're competing with $20 an hour fast food workers. So $20 hour minimum wage. We're competing with the combination of, I talked about the agency, National Fire Protection Agency. It's, it hasn't been seen, well, NFPA recommendations have always been guidelines, right? Guidelines or recommendations of how you should do business if you can, it's the preferred way. Well, those preferences are turning into principle because agencies like NFPA and, and OSHA are combining to create unfunded mandates that cost cities money. Cost the city $80,000 this last year. We implemented that cancer prevention program, didn't see that one coming. Radio service, communications changes, these little unfunded mandates pop up and, and they're a threat to our, our wellbeing with those unforeseen unfunded mandates. And then, you know, some of the other thing, going back to labor group and, and again, the hourly rate, we're, our guys and gals, our, our people are trying to make a living and I'm just going to be really honest that, that today's, today's number that I was shocked, you know, our folks want to make 100, not our folks, but, you know, people are looking at, at making, you know, six digits walking into a probationary position that, you know, they want to make between 80 and $100,000 a year coming into an organization and we're competing against that. But again, I go back to our outstanding culture and giving the opportunities for growth and looking for the right personalities to support our city. But it's, it's a looming threat, it's a challenge. Opportunities and, and I don't so much look at threats, but timing. We're absolutely looking for opportunities as force multipliers. I think council knows and, and I don't know that the public knows just how many hats everybody's sitting at the, at the table wears. We all do multiple things, we all have multiple jobs. We're looking for other ways to service force, force multipliers and implement new programs and services that are not a burden on not only the taxpayers, but to better serve the departments and, and the city. Again, we're always looking for the ability to adapt and keeping that reasonable, fiscally sound standards of cover in mind. So that ends my portion of the SWAT analysis.
Through this, we began talking about what are some of the objectives for us moving forward. I, I think for us, it was easy as Lieutenant and I were kind of reviewing things. We, we want to continue the prompt efficient service. It is always a goal, as the fire chief talked about it as well, of making it so that our call time drops. Those things that come along with when you land the customer service parts, even though it's your worst day, whether it's often fire or police, those parts of making it so that you come away satisfied, not always necessarily happy, but your problem and situation resolved is really, it gets to the basis of what all public safety is trying to get to. Continuing with those, of course I want to continue the crime reduction. Those numbers I put up today are fantastic. Do I worry those will change in the future? Of course, that, that's always a constant concern for us. Right now for a 2023 report and our overall that we got to see a lot of down arrows, it's fantastic for us. And it goes at the heart of everything we talk about in Calamasa being a very good, safe city to live in. Those statistics are excellent for us. And so of course, that's a constant goal for us to continue striving for in my world. With that, the public education piece, it gets at those community parts that I don't always necessarily fight the community relation part that I'm talking about, but just educating some of the basics that we spoke earlier on, when you go into Stater Brothers, actually lock your car. Those basics, those are always a challenge for us. As I know, he has it on his side in getting rid of your weeds and foliage around the house and those unnecessary things that we know increases to fire. We fight it constantly at, hey, lock your, lock your house at night. Hey, oh my God, my car got broken into. There's, there's no sign of forced entry. Despite what everybody says in the world, that is only because you left it unlocked. We hear all the crazy, they must've had a cool cell phone app that unlocked my Tesla, never, ever, ever would that. It's just the fact that we need you to lock your car and some of those basics, obviously. And so that public education piece is what we're looking to continue. And then last, that part that, that's a challenge for me is I, I think I explained in continuing to increase that community relations. And so those parts, I, I, as he spoke, I, as I spoke with the city manager the other day, we had no problem landing at the Myrtlewood dedication the other day. But of course, at the same time, a mere three, four streets away, as Councilman Manley heard listen to me talk about this, we had a use of force incident involving somebody wanting to fight the deputies. Well, it takes us away, it's just a reality and it took me away from the dedication and those things. And so it, it just happens in that, yes, that is a constant challenge for us and very much our objective always in increasing those community relations.
So fire department objectives, number one, reliability and reliability is being able to respond to the, the types of incidents or the types of hazards that, that we're going to be faced with reliably. But, but not so much the first response, but we're looking at that second response piece and, and getting there within that six minute timeframe. And the six minute timeframe is a class one ISO checkpoint, if you will. We're going to shoot for that. It may not be attainable, it may be attainable, but we're looking for that, not only on our first response, but our second response as an objective. Distribution of resources, I think we beat that one up pretty good with understanding of facilities placement. There's a good, there should be a good understanding of that. Fire prevention, public education, enforcement and engineering, those bullets stand out. I did not talk about an unfunded mandate, something that's coming our way. Fire department gets rated by insurance services, the Office of Insurance Services. And that has a direct correlation and effect on homeowners insurance for homeowners and then business insurance. And there are ratings, class ratings from, from one through 10. Your, your city right now is a clash, is a class three slash X, X being a 10. Training, apparatus resources, water systems, all the fire prevention components all play into that ISO rating. Historically, that's been the, the metrics used for, for granting insurance. Something that we've seen and everybody's talked about and I've talked to council multiple times is fire hazard severity zone mapping for high, very high. And state fire marshal's office and, and the state government has changed the metrics of those components. And those very high fire severity zone maps and, and high fire severity zone maps has had a direct influence on homeowners and businesses' ability to insure. We've heard about it. The state mapping, SRA mapping has, has come out. The LRA, the local responsibility area mapping is due to come out, projected sometime next year. That unfunded mandate is going to have an impact on local agencies, on local governments because we don't have any control on that. So there are things that are going to have to be done that the city entities cannot do. We're going to have to prepare for those things. To the education piece, we need to educate and it needs to be a grassroots effort. We're going to have to encourage a grassroots from the citizens approach to establishing, establishing fire safe or fire wise councils that will offset some of those costs potentially. But know that the mapping component, the terrain, the micro terrain, the alignment of winds and where we are located in a foothill community, we've got the odds against us and, and those mapping areas where, where we have seen some relief in the past, we're, we're probably not going to see, I, I'm not very optimistic of what that looks like. That's an unfunded mandate and, and folks just don't get the education piece, think that cities and local government, counties have some say in that and we, and we really don't. We're, we're at the behest of, of the state government. So fire prevention in the city. So coming, going back full circle, when we reorged, we've got a fire prevention bureau. We're looking at opportunities to continue to collaborate with planning, with engineering, being upfront and involved in being aware, not so much having a hand in, but being aware of what that development looks like so that we can prepare, that we can educate and get out and, and do that proactive piece equal to what law enforcement would be doing. You've heard me say it before, you'll continue to hear me say it, we're out working with all of our partners, we're weight abatement, general abatement, those nuisance issues, we're looking for the opportunities to partner with because I think there's, I don't think there, I, I know, I've seen it in, in 42 years, there's a collaboration, there's, there's a correlation between some of our blight and our homeless issues and the rise in crime and the spike and the appearance that the city isn't doing anything, when quite frankly, that's not the case. But marrying those up and taking a proactive collaborative approach to some issues. And that'll be the end of my report on objectives.
So again, what this kind of all comes back to is what we, what the chief has referred to as the community risk reduction approach. So if you want to go to the next slide. I did talk, you know, I've talked a few times in this presentation about trying to look at the services that we provide, kind of maybe sometimes in a vacuum and how those can be combined to provide a better, more integrated service, more efficient service so that we're not only, you know, being fiscally, more fiscally responsible than we already are, but also being more efficient with our resources and therefore providing better service. So Chief, if you want to kind of explain kind of some of the steps on, on this.
So the reoccurring themes, you know, going back to law enforcement and fire, when Councilmember Manley and, and Hewitt, Mayor Pro Tim Hewitt, you know, when we sat down or we started theorizing over some of these law enforcement issues and, and community issues, we had the initial conversations and then, and then took a step back between Evan, Will and myself, you know, taking a look at, at what do we have to work with and what can we do? So we're looking for the opportunities as, as a force multiplier, what do we need, what do we have? And, and quite honestly, going back to an incident that, you know, is kind of raw for the city, we go back to the Sandler Wood incident and how strapped we were and, and some of the lessons learned and the takeaways of that. City staff, just, just straight, not, not, not the fireside, but city staff and law enforcement, I don't want to say we're overwhelmed, but they were overwhelmed. We got into areas that we didn't see. Multiple people doing multiple tasks and we were a little bit unprepared. We were kind of reliant on not just what was going on in the incident, but the aftermath for the days to come. How do we, how do we help out? We have the clerical staff up front serving multiple roles. We have an EOC component, number one. So what, force multiplier, combined, combined approach. And then going to the recent issues that Councilmember Manley talked about, we, we got into taking a look at what the citizens on patrol program looked like. And I'm going to get into that and stop me if I want to. So, so historically, and I'm kind of going to go back, I've been in the community over 30 years. Been, been a, a, a community member, watched different programs. And I'll go a step further, I had a very dear family member, my wife, that oversaw citizens patrol program in the city of Ucaipa. And I recall the citizens patrol program in Ucaipa and how robust that was. I don't know if it is today, but, but by the same token, had the ability to instruct and watch what Sherry put build in the program in the Ucaipa. At one point, there were, I'd guess better than 30 members in the citizens patrol in the, in Calamasa and Beaumont. And they were directly, and, and that had correlation back into our mobile home parks. And it also had a component of the ham operators club that was in the fireplace room, sitting right behind me. And we've seen that go from that robust program of 30 plus people, a lot of volunteerism, down to what it is today. And I, I think we have four, maybe five. And, and volunteerism's kind of dropped off. And part of that, is part of the concern today is, is the oversight of that program. And so those are some of the challenges upfront, those are the things that we see. But being optimistic, what, what do we want and what do we need? Okay? Law enforcement is like, hey, you know, there's the perception that, that we don't have enough deputies. Well, I think we've chewed that up pretty good. Could there be more? Yeah, but how do we, are there enough out there? I, I think the captain answered that pretty well. But we're still looking for an increased presence and increased service. But, but more so, I think in the city of Calamasa and what's, in, in my humble opinion, missing throughout the state and across the United States is community involvement investment. And, and how do we get back to that? And, and our, some of our biggest challenges, we've got old Calamasa with a, a dynamic and a history. We've got new Calamasa. We've got new Calamasa, so to speak. The tale of two cities is Evan likes to talk with Will about.
Yeah.
And then we've got 10 mobile home parks. And I see Mike Barron sitting in the audience and he's been a part of PASCOM and, and I've gone to those meetings, although it's been a while, and Jerry goes to those meetings. And there's a framework to involve a lot of people and, and take some of the edge off and, and, and get that community involvement. And, and how do we do that? So taking the community risk reduction approach, that's a new, basically a new buzz in, in the fire service and combine that, going back to community-based policing. And to me, having had the benefit of worked, working in both worlds and, and being friends with Evan, we, we chewed it up and kind of put it together. It's the same issue, it's the same approach, it's just different terminology. How do we make that work for the city? So, a consolidated approach to problem solving and what that may look like. And we've kind of talked about it quite a bit. So our citizens' patrol, historically, what, what is a law enforcement or what does a law enforcement citizens' patrol program look like? Well, if we go down the line of all of the bullets, basically they do high visibility extra patrol. They're a force multiplier. They're doing vacation checks, business checks. In Ukaypa specifically, they had them tied into the, the Yana program, You're Not Alone. And some of those types of programs, in and out of the mobile home parks. And, and identifying those, identifying those abatement issues or those community challenges and communicating back on a level that is up to, but, but not quite at the reported complaint level. So, so really as a force multiplier, you have the ability to take an in-house kind of an organic resource and go out and solve the problem before somebody else complains. And, and we alleviate a, we alleviate the appearance of, well, what's the city doing? Because, because we're, again, taking the community members out there, putting them involved, getting the feedback and, and getting that, getting that challenge met or, or an issue mitigated on, on one side of the house. So that's historically what the, the citizens' patrol has done as a proactive enforcement piece. Now, in other manners, and, and something that grew out of the citizens' patrol was a spinoff, is the new concept, and it's not really a new concept within the last 10 years, the Community Emergency Response Team. You know, we try to get people on commissions, we try to insert people into different levels of community service on, serving on commissions or boards or, or whatever. And sometimes it takes and sometimes it doesn't. But a program is there that is very useful and Will met with Callie Binks this morning. I'll use the school district as a model. The school district has a CERT program and it's based on their teachers and their staff. And they put these folks through the CERT program. It's a, it's basically a 30-hour class, a Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, and gives folks the, the basics of how to work in a disaster, some basic first day, the hierarchy to the incident command system. And it gives them a nice backpack and you can go affiliated, whether you join a team or you're an individual, but it gives folks things that used to be taught in school. And, and it's a program that is very much like the old civil defense for those of us that remember what civil defense was way back in the day. So, we've got some opportunities there to cross over what, what it could look like for those historic services provided by a, by a law enforcement solely-based citizens' patrol program. I think we have an opportunity, we could put the CERT spin on it. We could encourage involvement. When you put the right people in place, those programs with some supervision and some oversight have the ability of growing within themselves, the hierarchy grows within them. And then we give them a supervised job mission or tasking with some recognition. And I think we have the ability to answer some of our other workforce multiplier questions. And, and to grow out a base of volunteers for the city, where it gains city involvement. And I think focusing, and, and my counterpart will agree or disagree, probably agree, focus in the mobile home parks, get the mobile home parks set, I think there's a basis for that. The piece that I haven't talked about is our faith-based community. Because not only do we have the largest public gatherings, schools, but getting back in, into the churches and I've been meeting with the ministerial association and, again, we've got Jerry involved in, you know, PASCOM and, and I think we're in alignment to potentially grow out and, and solve one of our issues, again, with some supervision, putting folks in a, in a city vehicle with a city uniform, with a city tasking and taking care of some of the challenges and some of the perception issues. It's one thing to see a red fire truck, and I said red fire truck instead of a black and white. People want to see public service out there, whether it's a fire truck, a black and white, a, a CSO vehicle, a city vehicle with the ability to report back. I don't think people care about what they get as long as they get some sort of service. And I'll kind of end there unless Evan has.
No, it, it opens, it opens all of that up for discussion as we've talked about coming to the close of this. And this, like our ordinance discussion, yes, needs to continue. The, the, you know, we looked at, as I had the history, as I went back decades in my office and found captains 20 years before me and those kind of things on some of these Calamasa citizens-on-patrol packages that we talked a lot about in, it just, I, I don't want to say the failing model, but it just lacked consistency. And so I brought up to them of, it seems to me it would be smarter to run it out of fire, city staff, just something consistent. Because that is always the piece that me as a contractual entity coming in is a challenge for what I explained in the officers and those kind of things. And, and it really began that discussion that we knew it needed to be introduced and us start to talk about, okay, true cost of vehicles. Norco and Palm Desert are the last places in the county that true have strong citizens' on patrol. And, and me getting with them on, give me some of the models of what's the actual radio that those people going out are using in two cars? And how is it getting to maybe the pop officer who's listening and a fire personnel who's on duty that's listening? And just some of those basics. And so, that was really what we wanted to introduce today to walk us down that path for what I could see as future discussions on, on the details.
So I guess maybe to kind of summarize where we're at, what we're trying to look for, I think are two things really. Kind of get feedback on, number one, the ordinances that we've talked about and some of the ordinances that we, when we want, would like to bring forward for the council to consider. And then number two, kind of your thoughts on this community risk reduction approach that we have, including volunteerism and the volunteer program with citizens-on-patrol and how we can integrate both things that are on the law enforcement side and on the fire side of things. So that's kind of what we're looking for here. Obviously, wanted to provide you a lot of data, which we have, but at the, but the end of the day, I think what we're looking for as staff is just kind of feedback on those two tenants of, of information.
I'll go ahead, I'll get it started. As far as Will, Will, are you able to elaborate on the, the citizens-on-patrol, as far as their equipment and, and vehicles? I don't have all the details on, as far as this, kind of where the status of that stuff.
So right now, we have one vehicle, it's probably not in the greatest shape, so we probably would need to at least replace that one at a minimum. I think what we want to do, our, our, I think what our, our strategy would be at this point with citizens-on-patrol, number one, would be to look at and revamp the policies and procedures manual and their bylaws. Because they, they are about a dozen years old, so we'd have to, obviously have to make sure that they're kosher with our current risk management liability standards, because that's, that's a big part of it. If they're going to be doing stuff on behalf of the city and in a city vehicle, there are liability issues that we have to address. So that's probably number one. And number two, you know, once we have that built out and we start going out in the community and kind of seeing what response we get, we would obviously want to make sure that we provide the equipment that they need to do the job successfully, you know, uniforms, other equipment. If we, you know, I think we start with one vehicle, but maybe a second one would be warranted if there's, you know, a lot of interest in the program. So there's some upfront costs that I think that we do have sufficient funds available to use. And I think that a budget, even looking at other cities that have, you know, the, the two men, the cities that Captain Peterson mentioned, Norco and Palm Desert, I've looked at their budgets and, you know, they're not spending more than $20,000 a year. And our budget currently is in the $5,000 range for our citizens-on-patrol currently. So, in order to probably make this a robust program, we're probably looking at about that much. So I think it's a small investment for something that, number one, I think gives meaning for some of our, our residents that want to, that want to volunteer and want to make a difference. And, and secondly, that gives us additional eyes and ears. You know, I think, I, I would equate, you know, the COP program kind of to the flock, right? So it's an additional resource that gives our, you know, our officers don't need to be, or our firefighters don't need to be on scene to see things. They're, they're, they're seeing things out and, and bringing that feedback back and they can use that information then to kind of, you know, tailor what they're looking for in their patrols and things like that. So, but I think in terms of what we have today, you know, like I said, we have that vehicle, we have a couple of volunteers, obviously we want to work with who we have and make sure that, you know, we continue to have their support and that we can, you know, build upon, you know, the, the people that we do have currently volunteering.
Thank you for the explanation there. I'll circle back to that. I'll try to hit, hit all these little points and we've covered a lot of information, so I really appreciate everybody's help of, as we've had the meetings before this and you guys presented a lot of great, great data, so it took some time to really get that all together and we've gone back and forth in our discussions. So, before we even started, before we even created our ad hoc, when I was just looking at like our law enforcement services, for example, it was, when I first kind of came over, it was really hard to get a hold of some data. So there was hard for me to get a good read on like where, where we're at, you know, what's, what's going on out there, what's, you know, the call levels like as far as do we have enough, you know, do we add, how do we add? Just some basic, trying to get some basic understanding of that stuff. There was very little data out there for me to kind of get my hands on as our first kind of meeting with Will. So, I really appreciate Captain Peterson's efforts in giving all that to us and I think you really were able to articulate and break that down for everybody. So hopefully everybody, I know I have a much deeper understanding now after all, all of our meetings, so I've seen this data over and over again. But I think you really were able to summarize it great for everybody, so hopefully all the community knows, because I know if I didn't know, I'm sure the community didn't know exactly all this, all this data that was presented and summarized, so they kind of understand how the city stacks up. And there's not just one data point to look at, so as you kind of laid out all these different things, every city's unique, so kind of looked at the, the type of crime that we have here, what we're dealing with in this community, you know, our population and also what, what's important for the, the council and, and the community and how, what kind of service do we, do we want to have here? So, have much, much better understanding of all those different things. And I think looking at, just my opinion, as far as looking at our model, now I had a better understanding of kind of how, how it operates, but the decisions that the past councils have made, having our pop officer and our CSO and our patrol together, I, I agree with, with that model, so I wouldn't change anything with that. So just as Captain kind of explained, like, looking forward, what does it look like as far as where we're at and growing toward the future? He kind of covered this, but I'll just say just my opinion, I would agree with, probably the next step would be, okay, if we're going to, it's probably going to be tied to some, some type of development, right? So, and what, what that is, whether that's retail and, or it's more houses, whatever development comes is going to kind of dictate, you know, what, what law enforcement will probably have to do to adapt to that. But, he showed, he showed our, the calls based on day and time of day and those types of things. So I, I think the most logical thing looking at, at would be, you know, to adjust hours to the contract, to the patrol side of things going forward. That, that's just my opinion and that's something that we would have a lot of conversation about in the future and we continue to look at that. But I think that gives us, all that gives us a lot, the council and the community some better, better information so we can make some more informed decisions moving forward on that as we continue to, to look at that, that side of things. Looking at the ordinances, I think my opinion on those, if, the catalytic converter thing is Captain mentioned, not, not associated to the homeless issue, kind of a separate, but they already have the, the verbiage for that in the county.
The framework is there.
Yeah, it's all there, so we can just kind of bring that over. That's not a lot of work and I think that's kind of, that's been an issue for, for years all, all over the communities around us. But specifically with the homeless-related ordinances we're looking at, I think if I tried to narrow it down, I'd probably looked at two of them, one being the campaign, as Jeff mentioned, that Supreme Court's looking at that. So I'd probably just wait on that, see what the Supreme Court has to say about it and then maybe take some direction from that, if, if we need to address that specific issue in the future. And the other one, I think probably shopping, the shopping cart thing, just observations I've made driving around town, I've noticed it, so. The way that would be useful, Captain kind of explained that as far as, if that was in place, we wouldn't have to involve other businesses being victims and things like, law enforcement can take action just by them being in possession of this. Because the reason I like it is because, one, it's impacted businesses, they're taking property from businesses. But law enforcement doesn't have to necessarily bother them with, hey, is this your property? Was it stolen? Do you want them arrested? And, and doing all of that stuff, they can just take much quicker action if they, if they need to, just by their own observations and it's a much easier fix. And then hopefully something like that would kind of fix itself once it was kind of enforced and then that would, hopefully that would reduce that, that particular issue in the future from, from happening. And was, was there some other ones that we wanted to cover? Did I miss anything, Will? Was there any other categories?
I think those are the, the main things that we were, we're looking at. I know other ones we're look, we've been looking at too is have to do with food vendors, but those aren't homeless-related, obviously there's other, that's other stuff. But I know that planning has already been, has already looked at that kind of stuff, so we're, we're working on that.
Okay. That'll, I think I'll stop there.
I'm going to take some time to process all this information. You gave me some great stuff, so I'm, I haven't been in the ad hoc and so I'm not up to speed on a lot of these things, but I do agree that with the ordinances, I think those are some low-hanging fruit we should do to improve our situation. That's all I have to say right now. To, to interject real quick, just because it, it was glowing stars for me that I instantly thought, let me just say it and put it out to the community, is we look to the future and we look to what is a natural possible increase tied to development and some of those things, that is not right now, that really is our future. And so as I talked about, and I noted, you might have wrote it down, of a, a cost breakdown comes for me from any contract city that partners with the county at the estimation number I gave of $214 an hour, times, and we knew whatever six hours is and whatever 12 hours was, was the example I gave. But for our listeners and so everybody understands, no, a deputy sheriff does not make $214 an hour. I know I'm going to get that question, okay? That, that's like what a fire guy makes per hour. It's like fantastic, okay? We wish, but I know I'm going to get that question because I mentioned it. That, that number is obviously salary benefits, county administrative costs, cost of units, the myriad of costs that go into all of our contract city and it boils down to what is that hourly rate. I just felt I, I needed to add that because those are the, the, as I try to break it down as simple as possible for our own math moving forward, but it is something that struck out that I know I'm going to get a question on. And so that, that breaks it down.
And, and you know, something that, that Sheriff Bianco actually said at that meeting- And you know, something that Sheriff Bianco actually said at that meeting we were at a couple of weeks ago, talking about what the costs are all included. So they have, they have a myriad of special units. And those costs are actually not included in that rate. Because those are things that the county already has. But if we need them, they will provide them. Now, we still have to have those officers and the hours, we pay for the hours for the officer at that $214, $214 an hour rate. But the overhead related to those programs, we're not paying for that directly, even though we have access to them. So I think that, that needs clarification too.
And Councilman, sorry to interrupt. Back to you, sir. I don't know what else.
It's a little comment on what you were talking about with John, that, you know, the, the citizens on patrol and that, there were some good people on it. It was all volunteer. And the thing with volunteer groups, if you don't bring new blood into it, people get older. And people lose interest. And sometimes if you have a council that's a little rambunctious and likes politics, they like to get in the middle of it and sort of mess with things, which doesn't work. You know, it's, but Calamasa used to be a volunteer community. That's gone down. And it's, the new people moving into town, you know, a lot of them I talk to, they don't care about, they don't really, they don't care about anything. They just want a place to sleep, buy their groceries, and go to work. You know, and it's, we have to bring people back into it. You know, and it's a, it's a hard thing, because I do talk to people and I, I'm sort of frustrated with their attitude sometimes. Because, you know, it's, it's the people here on the council, we care about this community. You know, and we have an interest in it. We have, you know, I don't have any kids living in this community. But I, you know, I've lived here. My wife's lived here. I've got people working for me that live here. And, you know, it's, it's going to be a hard sell. You know, it got so bad with the community on, you know, on patrol. They couldn't keep a set of wheels on the vehicles because they were running into the curbs and bending in the wheels. So they had to go through a driver's training exercise so the insurance company would pay it. You know, and it's so, you know, they have some good people in there right now, but they don't have very many. And there's no direction. And we're going at it right now. You have my support fully.
Thanks, Baron. Going back, you said something about the youth. So we get hit up probably two or three times a week about reliving the, and reviving the Explorer program. That's, that's another challenge.
You guys used to have a really good Explorer tour, and that was, what's his name?
Skority.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at, and to your point, you know, we get the kids, and then some of them stall out around 18. Some of them go, I mean, they get a confused direction. It takes, sometimes it takes them from 18 to 21 to figure it out. And I think what we've seen, some other service models, is we do it right, and we can capture those 18 to 21-year-olds in a citizens patrol program. It's going to feed both programs. We'll get them tested for the fire department or the sheriff's department, and we'll still feed our program for those that just want to volunteer and have something to do. There's not a lot of options right now out there. And it's tough.
Okay.
Well, I'm totally supportive of the citizens on patrol. I'd like to see that revived. Whatever I can do to help, let me know. As for the city ordinance options, the catalytic converter run obviously is a low-hanging fruit. We can talk about the other ones later.
Sounds good.
It's not an emergency to be taken care of right now, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, sad one, sad one thing, sir. One thing I left off, sorry, I didn't really address the COP. But, yeah, I agree with the direction that we're headed on that. And I think, just as Mayor mentioned, kind of lacks some direction. Currently, we've got a few dedicated people left. But I think once we rework that policy and the management, we're kind of bringing it in-house, I think we'll easily be able to get some people, the program will grow. Because they want to get in there and help. They just don't have some direction at the moment. So once they can get in there and actually contribute to what Public Safety's doing, I think the program will be a lot more successful.
I think there will be some novelty to it, and I think that'll get, they'll kind of give us a little shot in the arm. I think there is some pent-up demand for volunteerism in certain parts of the community. That's our goal to target them. But then, it's, once we have it, then we have to make sure, you know, it's, it's one of those things that you got to keep feeding it, right? You got to keep feeding it. You got to keep supporting it. Because once you don't, then it dies out quickly. So, yeah, so we can do the work to get it going. And I think it's going to, we're going to have to continually invest in the program. Not necessarily monetarily, but time and effort to be able to keep that going. And that's, that's the goal of it. And that's why bringing it in-house makes sense. Because, you know, right now, you know, we have Captain Peterson. He's done, I don't think anybody would disagree that he's done a tremendous job for us. And, you know, once, you know, he decides to retire begrudgingly from us. But, you know, it is what it is. That's, he's earned it. He's earned it in his service. And same thing with Lieutenant Olson. You know, we, we've got.
Hopefully, we get somebody that's invested in our community.
Yeah, and that's, it's always a wild card, right? Because that's one of the things that we don't have control over.
Yeah, well, Captain, when you're, when you're resting, you know, you don't have to live here to be a volunteer.
As Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, beat you to the punch on that. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I said, when are you retiring?
I do need to add for the group, I get hit up a lot for our open spaces and our motorcycles. I think we were all making a joke before all of this regarding a recent post and jumping a building and those kind of things that we have, I'll call it, in Oak Valley North. And some of the things that go along with us balancing horses, motorcycles, and to that larger piece. I will say, from our law enforcement perspective, it is a constant struggle because, A, we're in cars. That's a reality. And so as Hinkle and I talk about it regularly, as the patrol guys talk to Lieutenant Olson regularly, they hit a trail and they're gone. Those parts that, being connected to the bigger machine, we have a giant off-highway vehicle crew that can bring out all the cool toys and Raptors and trailers and side-by-sides and all this stuff. But what I notice the most is, it is four consistent riding areas. And that's the big part for us. It's very sporadic. It is not to where I can tell them, hey, I need you off of the end of the school. On the weekend, Saturday afternoons is massive. And they do it. And they do a great job at taking care of that around the county, as I've watched them. But for us, it is truly a consistency piece that I struggle with as I get these calls on the motorcycles that run from us, horses and motorcycles coming upon each other. And so I just want to mention it as, it is an ongoing effort, but it is openly a struggle because of, no, I don't see it as our locations that have 100 motorcycles going, and we know we need to roll the big machine in. And so that's all I have on that. I just wanted to mention it.
Yeah, I would just suggest that the kids, I don't know who's listening to this, but have your children wear their helmets, please, because I know I've.
Yeah.
I've reported a lot of people not wearing helmets. And that's where you can have some very, very serious injuries, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot.
You guys did a great job. Thank you.